It's a nice letter from Alan. Is it twenty-two?
No, it should be twenty-three.
Should be twenty-three, okay, I'm like, we don't really go a year behind, do we? Am I missing, are we really missing something?
Yeah, where are we, where are we at on last year's? Yeah, 'cause the rest of them, same, yeah.
Yeah, okay, like this.
Oh, just in the nick of time.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Donna's retiring Friday and Friday or whatever, that was way off.
Oh, yeah. All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting of Mercer County Commission to order. Um, as far as the agenda, um, we should add, um, sheriff's fees on other business. Any other changes to the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
Uh, motion by Gene, seconded by Rick, to approve the agenda as amended, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Minutes of the June twenty-first meeting.
I haven't seen anything yet, anyway, I move to approve as presented.
Motion by Gene to approve the minutes, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Jamie, any corrections, additions, or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, review of the bills.
Carmen, do you know what these other utilities are on here? There's no description from, or addresses, one's social services bill. Yep, social courthouse, county shop, social services, but the last one's not listed as to what it is. So this is.
Uh, there's a paper clip on there, there's gonna be a bill that goes in front of that.
Spiders.
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 Oh, that's a, so this one goes in front of that.
Do the one?
Yep. You don't need the paper clip, I would just.
No, the paper clip can come off, it was just marking where.
Where the bill was going.
Basically, this is the store F, we just now got done with our meeting.
Is one thing for, uh.
Yes.
For, uh, Sheriff's Department, that's, uh, that's not so, that has nothing to do with anyone wanting.
No, actually, that's to maintain, you know, the radios within the sheriff's office. They got a whole radio system that isn't.
They have a contract.
Yes, they do, and I think they've had it for a very long time.
But there's so many different moving areas of that.
Yes, there is, and this is specific to sheriff's readings.
I ran the room for you, sir, yes.
Carmen, is this Rosemary, is she a new employee?
I didn't make this.
Yeah.
I didn't either, I was planning on it, I absolutely could not get here.
Say that again, is she a new employee?
They spoke.
Yes, yep.
No, my head.
Oh, this whole, this whole.
Big city and everything I did wouldn't sell us that way.
What's that?
Someone is retiring, and I planned on being here, but I was like, it was just, it was one of those days in the beginning, then.
You missed some good cake.
Yeah.
And lemonade, the lemonade was good, I don't know who made that, but that was really new.
When she was telling stories of when she started and.
This is Kestlin, too.
I know we did this once before.
Is that in the seventies or the eighties?
I don't know, my mom and dad were talking about that for a jam, because my mom left, don't forget that, too.
Discussion on it? I said two, one, I mean, discussion.
Well, that wasn't my first guy, we were talking about replacing that door over there at the heating shop.
That's what I said, I'm like, that was a long time ago that we talked about it to get done here in June, or June or July, whatever. Professional heating and cooling and Dodge, who knows that?
Was that, uh?
Is that what he's calling them? So maybe it's not new, I just know, maybe it's just called, just call Brett.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the only one I could think of.
That's, he's all I can think, yeah.
It's not like there's a.
I've got my own evening going, Joe comes, I come, when I call by.
That's his handwriting, so. When I use them, he just told me how much.
Did you write it in cash? This is.
That's down, no, this is for the new dispatcher.
Oh, okay, so.
Yep.
Must be free paint?
Hmm?
Must be free paint?
Yeah, that's all colors, I thought it would just be a.
Dan, you should give us some commentary while we're going through bills. Sure.
He was during the legislature, he was speaking, he was true to how, this would have covered everything except that, because of the storm, so.
Yes, I'm trying to listen to you. Yes, and I want to, but it's not on the agenda, on snow removal funds from the state.
Yeah.
I can't remember the H D something, anyway, uh, four hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars we got back from the state. And that would have been everything we did outside of that major storm that we got a FEMA grant coming for. And that should be coming in the next couple of weeks, but that's not gonna be quite as much, that's like a twenty thousand dollars. No, this will go back into highway fund, um, state reimbursements. It's all FEMA and the highway fund, all the expenses, that's all put back to, same with the FEMA, it'll go back in there.
So that doesn't.
Is that why, what?
Sounds like you both have.
Everything that they spend on snow removal comes out of the, the county road fund.
Mm-hmm.
So everything that they put in for, um, yeah, everything was paid out of that fund, therefore, the revenue account will be back into that road fund, that's where that goes.
That's the twenty-one forty fund, or twenty-one?
That one, I don't know if I got on yet.
So for, for budget purposes, we don't amend revenues.
Budget purposes, we, I wanna have a list of all the revenue, you know, 'cause you have your transfer in, and that definitely, I wanna have that, too. We're not gonna have numbers today, 'cause I wanna make sure they're accurate, so next meeting, that's when we're gonna cover all of that. But I also am gonna have a list of all the transfers in, 'cause that counts, too, and then all the, uh, what we've got for, you know, budgets and things, expenses. So we'll get a good look, we got a conference next week with, uh, Auditor Treasurer Conference, that we're all going to over there, so we're gonna get our numbers in a row, so then we can explain this.
Okay.
Okay, that, yeah, I'll have to go grab that number now. And I don't think we have that one or that sheet. 'Cause that was not, normally, they don't get state reimbursement, like, well, they don't get this, this is probably the first time the state's ever done this. But they do have an account for it, no, yeah, they will help that.
That soul was the last one, last bell?
Mm-hmm, I'm trying to figure out where that AED is at, 'cause we don't have souls here, so I gotta ask, who's hiding the souls?
Why would you hide an AED?
Who's hiding the AED that I'm just? Because all the other ones are like, they're in a different account, probably.
Waiting on me?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Rick to approve the bills, is there a second?
No, sir.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. All right, got a few minutes here, um, M C H A, chairman resignation letter.
I'll make the motion to accept resignation.
Okay, motion by Rick to accept the resignation.
No, second.
Second by Jamie, um, any discussion? You said basically, what's his last day?
September.
September.
September, three more meetings, yeah.
Okay. And is that something?
Do we need to post?
We post for that, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and he actually.
He said he's gonna find someone.
Yeah, and I'm gonna send him some applications, and we'll post it like we're supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Give us a notice?
Yeah, and help find someone.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, sheriff's fees. It's this one, maybe?
Yes.
Forty-three thousand five seventy-one and eighteen cents.
Move to approve?
Motion by Gene, seconded by Rick to approve sheriff's fees, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Um, let's see. Got a couple of minutes for portfolio updates, um, Gene, you wanna start?
I, uh, don't have much, we met with the road, I'll let, um, Rick expound on that if he's got any. Clerk and board, I have nothing, State Attorney didn't. Policy, uh, weed board, I reported on the last meeting, and Mercer County Economic Development, I did not attend, so, that's it for mine.
Okay, Rick?
Uh, Road Department was, uh, pre-budget, uh, couple of meetings on that, we talked about, you know, where we, like agendas on what we wanna do. And pre-planning for future on other roads, that, um, Fair Board is, we're eight days away, so.
Yeah.
That's been kinda taking care of a lot of my time right now, so, um, yeah, I've been busy with the Fair Board, uh, other stuff, I, uh, don't have anything on the other portfolios right now, so.
Okay, um, as far as my portfolios, I was at the, um, Lewis and Clark, um, Joint Board Meeting, um, it's a coalition of, I think it's like six or seven counties, kind of south-central counties, um, they're doing a lot of good things, uh. They started, um, lending to communities and other agencies in nineteen ninety, and by the end of this year, they all have, um, lent out one billion dollars. So, that's pretty significant, um, thing, they've done everything from low housing to setting up housing, to managing properties, um, they're actually looking for a property management, um, individual, um, that would be based out of Bismarck area, so. If anybody knows anybody in that area that would like to go around the state and fix things, they're looking, um, Library Board met, they approved their preliminary budget, um, that should have been submitted to Carmen, and then Planning and Zoning, we didn't have a meeting in June, but we have one in a couple of weeks here in July. And that's about the updates I have, Jamie?
Um, Jim, I haven't presented with him, he was busy yesterday after being gone with his dad and stuff, um, landfill, Candy's loader is still down, they're hoping, yesterday was Wednesday, Butler was hoping to come, yesterday, the Road Department's been helpful in getting her a loader to help her out. Um, unfortunately, we are losing an employee at the landfill, um, Brett has put in his resignation, moving out to the oil field, it sounds like, so Candy will be looking, she talked to Carmen yesterday about getting that posted. Um, she, Carmen and Candy did work on budgeting some for the capping of the landfill that needs to be done, so, um, Candy's just been busy with garbage and trying to work around this loader being down, so. Buster's still on summer vacation, Costa will be here today to present, our Western Plains will be here today to present, um, so Marvin sent out that, and the other one, I think that's it, and just a reminder, the fly-in, since Liza's not here, fly-in is Saturday at the airport, Saturday morning.
And when you see Candy's down with garbage, it literally is?
Literally, dude.
All right.
Nice of the Road Department to help her out, so.
Okay, that's portfolios, I think we're close enough to go to Planning and Zoning, Cindy?
Okay, um, temporary use permit number six sixteen is a, uh, application from S C S Permanent Carbon Storage LLC for a stratigraphic test well in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter. in the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter, section twenty-two. Um, Township One Forty-two, Range Eighty-Eight, for, and, um... Jay Volk is here, if you have any questions. They've done this before. This is for that carbon capture test wells.
Just for reference, it's what, four or five miles west of forty-nine? Jay, if you want to come up? Okay. Sure.
Apologize for that.
Tell me to put it on?
Um, I did bring it down.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
It's on Barry Fisher?
Correct.
Barry, yeah.
Yeah. Jay, if you just want to give us a little bit of update on it and...
You bet. Mr. Chairman, if I may, maybe I will give just a little bit of a project update first, which then kind of leads into where we're at today and why did we even submit this to you? So, if you don't mind, I will be brief, uh, but detailed on, on where we're at today. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, because we do get a lot of questions, an overview on the pipeline side as well. So, uh, overall, we're at seventy-six percent right away on the pipeline in North Dakota. As you guys are very much aware, uh, the PSC hearings have taken place. We had five hearings over the course of the last few months. That process really now is in a briefing stage to where Summit is providing briefs. Um, there have been some additional hearings going on, so really there's probably a couple of months anticipation until any decision would come out of the, the North Dakota PSC. So that process is continuing to move on. I wanted to also give an update. Iowa did move up their schedule for their hearings. That was lagging a little bit. They did now bring those back up to August. So those hearings in Iowa will start in August and South Dakota has now been set for September. So a lot of things have started to creep back forward a little bit. I think last time I spoke to you and gave an update, they were actually maybe creeping the other way a little bit. So as you know, our project is very dynamic and ebbs and flows both directions. Um, a couple of notable points on the pipeline side, uh, we have submitted all the road crossings across eleven counties. Uh, last time, I don't believe we had done that. I think Oliver and Mercer at that time and MacIntosh were submitted, um, on the data I gave last time. They have all been submitted across eleven states. Um, we have submitted all of our North Dakota DOT road crossing permits. Uh, and, um, the significant portion of those now have been, um, approved on the DOT. So where we're at today is still planning on a twenty-twenty-four pipeline construction. The date is still a little bit up in the air. So I'm not going to quite forecast when a pipeline construction, um, could potentially take place pending permits, but, uh, things have been starting to creep up on that side. Moving on to the sequestration side of the project. We have now officially submitted our draft, uh, storage facility permit to the North Dakota NDIC. That is a draft copy, so not technically the formal one. It goes through initial review. Corrections are made, updates are made, and then a final copy for, um, submission is done thereafter. So we have submitted three Broome Creek applications, uh, one in Oliver County, or, excuse me, one in Mercer County and two in Oliver County. And one of those sites is the, the, as we refer to it on their sheets, the DK Fisher sites. So as I said, the project has had numerous ebbs and flows, really based on the pipeline permitting side. But where we're at today is things are now, uh, looking as it could have some potential moving back up. So what we have done today is submitted a temporary use permit. And the reason why we have done that is really thinking about when could we potentially start drilling some wells. Uh, the range and dates that we have laid out today and that I've spoke to before really has come to next year in April, to really kind of an August timeframe. And that all depends on the, the pipeline side of the schedule. So when you start thinking about an April timeframe, uh, one of the challenges that we have is how would you, uh, remove topsoil i- in the winter? So what we're looking at today is really to try, just like road crossing permits or NDOT permits, trying to take some of the variables off the table to where we can start progressing, then we can get to, um, into construction stage. So what we're asking for, uh, today is a temporary use permit to really do site construction for one of the pad sites, um, or the pad site in Mercer County. We will also be going and we have applied for in Oliver. We haven't gotten to the Oliver County Commission meeting yet. Uh, we will be, um, upcoming, but we will be applying for the, the conditional use permits over there as well. We, uh, formally haven't decided what site would be the first site that we would construct. Um, but potentially there could be two. I don't know if we would do all three this fall or not. But for sure, uh, we are going to do at least one site this fall. And the thought process behind that is if we would have a drill rig come out in April, we could, uh, start drilling on that site we have prepared. And we could have a construction crew then coming out and starting the other pad constructions while that drill crew is drilling the first site and then kind of methodically move them along. So we are looking at the timeframes and the schedules, um, but, uh, let's just say one to two, I think, is the plan right now, just to get ahead of that, that spring curve. Um, I would give you an update if all three would be done or not, but, uh, still some decisions to be made on that. So just a little bit more, what's next from the sequestration side, um, along with the temporary use permit here and the conditional use permits in Oliver. We will be submitting the APDs to the, uh, the North Dakota Industrial Commission for the drilling of those wells, uh, likely within the next seven to ten days. Um, just from a ballpark percentage that we have, uh, leased on on the sequestration side, on the site in Oliver, or, excuse me, Mercer County is approximately eighty-five percent. Uh, pore space is leased in the site as it stands today, and we have a path forward to, uh, get additional, uh, pore space leased in that site. Um, the highest site we have is over ninety-five percent leased, uh, one site in, um, Oliver County. So we're doing exceptionally well on the pore space leasing to date. So in front of you, uh, you do have the temporary use permit, um, for, for this. The plan is to drill two wells, and we did list it in, as a stratigraphic wells. And, and the real reason that's listed as a stratigraphic well is we do not have a storage facility permit yet or a Class Six injection, hence we could not come to you and ask for an injection site. So we are, um, proposing these a stratigraphic wells that would be built as a Class Six injection site, um, for the use of CO2 injection. Once we would receive, um, assuming we would receive a permit from the state, we would then, uh, get an injection permit, uh, likely into next year. And then we would, uh, change this into an injection facility. But that is the reason you see it as a stratigraphic test well today. Um, it is on Barry Fisher's land. I think the map provided gives you a little bit better detail on where it is exactly at. Um, just wanted to put out some proximities, uh, to, uh, to Barry Fisher's. It is approximately eighteen hundred and fifty feet from the, the side of the, the well pad to his, his farm. And Leroy's is just over two thousand. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a, um, a heads up on, um, where is that located in terms of the nearest residence as well. Uh, we do have agreements with, with both of those as well, and I think in the packet, one is from Barry as well, um, stating that, uh, he, he's in support of the, the, the use of the land. Other items we've been working on with, um, Mercer County is we did also submit to Ken a drive permit, and that is really for approach for, um, that sixty-two Avenue South, the road that comes south of Twenty-first. And that would be where we would be, uh, building a access road to a pad site. So that's what that drive approach, uh, submitted to Ken would be for, is, uh, the access, uh, road. That would be, uh, part of the, the drill pad, um, in, in that. What we have not submitted yet, uh, we had some conversations, uh, understanding the county's requirements on road builds is, um, we would like to improve about seventeen hundred feet of county road, uh, it would be Twenty-first Avenue. And, uh, on your map, as you come off Highway Forty-nine, the first part of that road going, coming up to Barry's is approximately an eighteen-foot wide road, plus or minus a little bit there. Uh, pretty good drainage on that, and it's a solid road. But once you get after Barry's, there's about seventeen hundred feet of road that we would like to tie into, to get to our access pad. So we will be working on a design. We had Ken looking at it yesterday with, uh, Jason Erickson to get some feedback, have some conversations with Barry yet as well. But we will be then, uh, hopefully submitting, uh, a, a plan to you guys to, uh, to allow us to improve that seventeen hundred feet of road or, um, other additional parts if needed. So that's just coming, what's next? So again, I just want to end with, uh, the, the next steps really for us is setting ourselves up for some pad builds this fall, um, allowing us to be ready to drill anywhere from April to August next year as that timeframe, um, isn't quite decided at this point. But that is the reason we've come to you today for, uh, for the temporary use permit. And I would stand for any questions or clarifications if you need them on the threat package as well.
And you guys plan to improve that road, not have the county do it?
Uh, you are correct, yes. We, we would.
Okay.
And, um, seeking input from the commission as well on, um, the rest of that road as well. Um, your feelings on how it stands today. Does it need any improvements, um, the eighteen-foot width and so forth, so...
Any other questions?
I guess, I'm, to, to me, I mean, I'm not... We got the cart in front of the horse, as far as I'm concerned, as far as, uh, the neighbors that have talked to me about this thing is, we don't have the... Talked to Ken yesterday, and we, I haven't heard anything from, anything on our side from the road, what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, um, like, I, I guess I'm not ready for it yet, so that's what I'm held up, but...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve temporary permit six-one-six or some other action?
Hesse, Rick, did you say there was concerns from other neighbors?
Well, Leroy talked to me about things and, uh, there were some things about on the road and think, access to the road and the site and things like that, and I don't know if anything's... Any of this has been addressed yet. I mean, that's, I don't know where we're at with it, I guess. But, uh, that's why I'm not really, I'm not ready to say, to sign off on it until I know where, where some of these things are at. Rather than, Ken hasn't expressed anything to us about it, so I don't know where, I have no idea where it's at, put it that way.
Okay, so who did you say is going to improve the road?
Carter, seven.
I apologize, yes. We, if we had a county road design that, um, you guys were in favor of, we would do the improvements of, of the road. We have not submitted that seventeen hundred foot, um, design or any improvements on the rest at this point. Looking for the county feedback on that. So we have not done anything with that seventeen hundred feet today or submitted anything related to that.
I guess my opinion is that, I mean, in the past practice that we've done is like this, this should have went to the planning and zoning and they got their input and thought what needs to be done before it got here, then we would know where we're at. But that's how I guess I feel.
I don't think they've ever gone to the planning and zoning.
No, not, not this, not this test well's always come here first.
I mean, we're talking about the site to the road and things like that, so...
Well, that's not part of the permit. That's future construction. What we've done in the past on any time we've had, um, a temporary use permit for one of these wells is that, that's what it is, is a temporary use. And when we go to permanent, then that's when we start talking about roads and improvements and rezoning and things like that. It's always been...
And this one expires at the end of the year?
It expires at the end of the year, so then...
This is just a test well. That's why it comes here first.
Correct. Yeah, so this is, this is our standard practice that we've done, I don't know, half a dozen or more?
Yeah.
This is not an injection well, this is a test well?
Correct.
As I explained though, I just want to make sure that I said that clearly last time. Um, on paper today, it's a stratigraphic test well. And the reason that's a stratigraphic test well today is because we do not have a Class Six injection permit and we are going through that process. So at some point in time, we would convert this to a, um, injection well, is the, the intent. But just from how the process is set up at the NDIC, um, you cannot get an injection well standing until you have that permit in hand. So that is why it's a stratigraphic test well.
And then it has to go get rezoned at P and Z first, rezoned, and then a conditional use.
Right.
If it goes farther, it goes through more steps?
Correct.
So, the point to me then, I guess, is it was a stratigraphic test well. So you're going to go out there and once you get a permit, you're going to go out there and get ready to move dirt and get it, get it prepared and everything ready, the site ready, correct?
That is correct. Um, the second part of what we're doing is we're pulling the sidewall cores out, so it is a test well as well. You use them for both. So that sidewall core is part of the permitting process for the actual well itself. So we're using that data for the rest of our packages, um, for North Dakota as well as, uh, the CAR program, Low Carbon Fuel Standard, uh, program. So, yes, we are preparing that pad. The pad is going to look, uh, exactly like the other pads you've seen in the past. Uh, we won't be going out, uh, at that point in time and constructing, you know, pumps or anything like that. What we would be doing is, uh, drilling of the well. So we would start drilling the actual well. You would see a Christmas tree, uh, bell, just like you would go through, uh, the sites you see today. That's, uh, what you would see at, at this point in time. Once we get into next year, it's drilled out, we would continue. Um, and all of our timing on our state storage permit is likely first quarter of, uh, this next year. So we would then, um, assuming we would get that SFP, uh, that storage facility permit approved, we would then convert this to an injection well, and that's what spurs really the, the development of the rest of that, um, pad site.
Do we need to approve it for an injection well when it comes, but it goes back through? So this would never go anywhere past this point, essentially?
Correct. And then if they're not ready to go through those steps, then that would be a, a renewal of the temporary use permit in, in January. So really, this is kind of our standard procedures and how we've set this up.
Right, it's the same thing as DGC or any of them.
So...
You currently have two, I'm already correct, two test wells?
We have actually three test wells.
Okay.
Two in Oliver County and one in, uh, Mercer County.
I did not know.
And those test wells today will have to stay, there'll be a, a, a monitoring well moving forward for the use, uh, with, excuse me, for, uh, the storage facility permit well that's in that, that area as well. So those will be in place the length of the project as long as we would be injecting into the wells that we're drilling upcoming.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Nope. Okay.
I'll move to approve this temporary use permit six-one-six.
Motion by Jamie to approve temporary use permit six-one-six. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Jay.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Anything else, Cindy?
Nope.
Thanks, Jay. And I need to see this phone? Nine forty-six, um, Craig, NDSU Extension Update?
Okay, I guess I'm just here to do my quarterly update for you all. Since the last time I've been here, I guess, kind of goes back to February. Um, we did the West River Judging Contest again in Beulah. We had about four hundred kids go through that contest of, uh, the crops. Livestock, egg sales and things like that. Done pesticide reviews, again, for producers in the county. Recertified about thirty people for that. Helped, uh, Beulah High School with their search of getting a second, a second vocational agriculture teacher. Uh, he started here yesterday, to my, best of my knowledge, so we got that taken care of. Did the RDO Safety Days. Carmen helped me with that. Again, for all the first grade students in both Hazen, Beulah and Center. Uh, all three schools, there's about a hundred kids that went through that program. Did a garden workshop here for Mercer County, had about forty people attend that, so that was a very good turnout in April. Did some Arbor Day stuff with a 4H group in town, been working on the fair for that for next week. Did a safety camp in Bismarck, tractor safety camp in Bismarck. That was a new deal that Extension did, we did one in Bismarck, Williston and Fargo. Had about forty-five kids go through that program and become certified to meet the state requirements for that. So, that's what's happening and as far as activities that kind of occurred in the last three months. As far as cropping and livestock goes, it's been an interesting spring. Spring started late this year, so everybody was kinda behind to start with. Thankfully, we've had decent moisture and rain. Rain and moisture and growing conditions kinda have been pretty favorable since about twentieth of May or so. Actually, some spots at the counties, county has actually received a little bit, probably excess rain. They'd like to see it slow down a little bit, but the cooler temperatures have been welcome for crop development, so things are looking pretty good. Have had some issues with insects and grasshoppers and blister beetles this year, that's probably gonna be a concern throughout, throughout the growing season this year, cause of moisture draws them and allows the hatch to be higher than normal with those. We are starting to see some things that we don't necessarily see in the county as far as fungal diseases occurring. So, been trying to keep producers and ranchers on top of that as far as fungal diseases and things like that, mold issues in crops that we usually don't see in the western part of the state, that's usually an eastern concern, but I have noticed a few things starting to show up in the corn and soybeans and things like that. Hay conditions are average, it's an average hay crop, quality appears to be average, which is probably be to be expected due to the heavy snowfall and the wet conditions that we've had. Some of that development didn't occur as nice as we would like this spring. As far as staff goes, we did hire a part-time secretary, support staff person. Rosemary Culver started on June twentieth, so that's a nice addition to the office to help Cindy out. Especially with the backlog that occurred when we didn't have anybody in that position and help us with all the fair registration and entries and things like that. That need to get done here in the next week or two to be ready for the fair and then all the paperwork and everything that comes with the state fair and finishing the records and everything after the county fair gets done. So, nice addition there. So, kind of in a nutshell, that's what's been happening on the extension frontier over the last three months or so since my last report, so. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Anything like that, just wanted to come in and give you a little overview.
Craig, is there anything, I know the Centricod talks about grasshoppers, is there anything that you've seen coming from the state about helping producers with the grasshoppers?
I have not seen anything as far as funding or anything through the state aid commissioner's office where that's come from or hasn't, hasn't been any information for programs or anything like that, to my knowledge, so far that's been announced.
I think Jean brought it up at the weed board, cause there was a few agronomists that had reached out, but I think the weed board said they're weed board.
Yeah, they're weed, not pesticide or herbicide, yeah.
Yeah. That would all come from, that would all come from, from the state aid department, technically. Technically, you guys, the county is just responsible for county, county, county lands. Unfortunately, if a private producer has problems with grasshoppers or stuff like that, you guys, to my knowledge, are not obligated unless there becomes a disaster program or a disaster declaration that would be required that you would have to sign off on that as a commission, but so far there hasn't been anything like that. And I don't expect it to be because it's not a statewide issue. It is an issue here in kinda western North Dakota, but it's not an issue when you get Bismarck east, Minot east, it's, they're not having insect problems. They're having water problems worth a lot of crop that hasn't been planted in areas. So, typical North Dakota, we have areas that are flooded and we have areas that are blown dry. If you look at the drought monitor, there's still a significant amount of the state that is under a drought situation. And then you go, like normal in North Dakota, you go thirty miles down the road and then there's standing water all over the place, so. Just another typical North Dakota year as far as crop development goes, it's all over the board.
And when we talk scattered showers, that's the definition?
Yeah, I mean, we have, you all know, we have places in the county that got three inches. You go five miles down the road and they got three hundred. Maybe not quite that extreme, but there's significant amounts of difference.
Hazen got two inches and we got six hundred.
Up by, up by the, yeah. Yeah, so it's, I would say up along the lake, they've had plenty of moisture, more than they want. And then you get down to Rick's area, they've had pretty much moisture. You follow Highway two hundred and just follow the highway and go five miles north or five miles south of the highway, right in the center of the county, they could use an inch of rain, no problem. So, that's kinda where we're at right now.
Speaking of water, water quality for livestock is improved?
I've been doing some testing so far, we have nothing that's off the charts. We do have a few hotspots, I'll call them, that are what they would call, you know, caution areas, but nothing that's considered critical or danger yet. This cooler weather and rainfall that we've kinda been getting here every week or ten days is very helpful with that. So, right now, we're okay, but if it gets ninety-five and no moisture for two or three weeks, that can change. There is some issue with this blue-green LJ that's occurring. You probably have heard on the news, there is some lakes, dams, things like that, or that there been monitoring and there is some issues with that across the state, but so far I haven't heard anything as far as Sakakui or Harmony Lake or anything like that, that we would have in our county that is considered in the critical area. But, but there is other places across the state that they are monitoring from what I've been told, so. So, there is a few issues.
Haven't heard anything but update on avian flu, where's that at, or?
So far, we're good. So far, to my knowledge, there's only been two cases reported in the state, and that's over by the, the south of Jamestown area, the Lisbon area. But, that was early in the year, in May. I haven't heard of any confirmed reports of that here in the last month, so. County fairs, county fairs are good to go with their poultry exhibits. I mean, there's, you know, our county fair is next week, but there's been county fairs in June and they've been holding them shows and no issues and knowing new information from the state's office on anything to be worried about, so. Hopefully, we're okay with that for this year and the migration should be done now for, the spring migration should be completed, so. I think we'll be, I think we should be okay for this year, but there again, it all depends on the fall migration and what we get, if we have an issue again next year or not, but we should be okay for this year. So, all in all, as far as issues or problems so far to date, it's been pretty quiet and, and hasn't been a whole lot of concern from any of the agencies on any of the updates and stuff that I've been getting so far, so, so far, things are going pretty good this year.
Sounds good, any other questions for Craig? Thanks for the update, Greg, and we'll see you at the fair next week.
Yeah, I imagine I'll be there.
Okay.
Mr. German, may I request a short recess?
Sure, let's take a short recess here.
Just one thing, I don't think it applies, but there was a land sale that was scheduled for in here before the commission meeting till today, so. Terry's haunting the hall out here in case somebody shows up for it, so keep an eye on the next ten minutes if somebody comes.
Okay, Dan?
Couple of quick questions I can involve you, first one would be for you as I scroll. Forgot that my notebook was running out, forgot to grab my second one.
You need a notebook?
So, I'm gonna need some of this.
Can I give you just a regular?
I'll, I'll honestly, we'll probably show up with a couple of sheets. So, and I've got, I've got the off, I just brought it from here, so.
I'll just leave some paper.
Yeah. And then I was, is that an executive session here? Do you know what that, this, to me, this doesn't look like something that you could go into executive session on, just regarding county commission responsibilities in general.
They're seeking advice. I've only got the most general of what we're doing. So, it's my understanding they just need some legal advice on some things.
But, that wouldn't be executive session, would it?
Yeah, seeking advice from their attorney.
I thought there were particular parameters, even with legal counsel, by which, I could be wrong.
It's the same as that if a CEO wants a conference of, okay, can we do this, can we not do that type thing?
Okay.
So, I don't know specifically what it is.
Something vague put on the agenda, we wanna ask you.
Yeah, it's not something I scheduled, I've got some questions and if it turns out to be something that should be done in a public meeting, it'll just repeat it on the record.
Yeah, okay.
I was doing that because it does appear, the information that we have.
And I might even ask Travis if I got a chance here.
How are you?
Thank you, good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah, I saw, I looked very, like a very vague. Yeah, or something like, if it's a particular employee's particular likes, you know, salary, something. There's something specific there, but.
So, what did you have, Mark?
I, I just had the same question.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the price they're seeking, but.
What the subject was, it required an executive session, cause what's on the agenda does not appear to be required in executive session. Oh, I'm just curious.
I don't know why it was requested, but.
There's three of us here that have to say.
Okay.
Do you know, can I ask, who, who did request, was that the chairman? The chairman?
They're asking who requested the executive session. Say you did because on the email.
I'd be, that doesn't look like something we should do.
Yeah, it's. And here's how we're gonna handle this, if what's asked should have been in a public meeting, we'll just pause that. I'll make that determination. If it's something that should be, well, then we'll just stop, open back up and discuss it there. But, the commission has the absolute right to have an executive session to get advice from their attorney without it being completely public. It's not the same as a, as a CEO requesting legal advice about what the board's doing or executive board in a corporation, but the commission always has the right to invoke attorney-client privilege or appropriate services.
This utility permit, what do we do with that?
Isn't that? I don't even have that.
I have nothing on that, I guess.
Oh, or Miss and Carmen?
Yeah, she said she'd hear it better.
I don't, yeah, I have.
How do we protect this?
I mean, we have the permit in front of us.
Did he talk to you? No, he don't talk to me, he doesn't say much of anything.
Okay, this is the third time I've looked for it, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't have that.
I don't either.
Do you have, did you make copies?
I did, but I thought we were gonna start the meeting, I found a copy right now. Okay.
Ready, ready to resume? Okay, ten oh five, call this meeting and the Mercer County Commission back to order. Next item on the agenda is the highway department, we have a utility permit seventeen fifty.
Do you have a copy of it?
I have a copy of it, I don't know if anybody else does.
Usually these permits, you don't all get a copy. I mean, I would have given you all a copy if I thought you wanted, but they were saying that Rick would know.
I, no one's brought anything up to me, I'm just, any of it, actually.
What is the request for, Mr. Chairman, that you have?
It is buried water line and a trench water line at a seven foot depth. It's located off of Fourth Street Northwest, eighteen miles west of Beulah.
Eighteen miles west?
No, it says, direction north, yeah, north, and then he's got west, yeah. Reading the permit here, north and west, eighteen miles from city of Beulah, or two miles north and one half mile. Let's see, from the junction Mercer County Road, which is sixty-third Avenue Northwest and eighteen oh six. Could be section sixteen and nineteen of Township one forty-six north, eighty-eight west.
Can we all get copies for, for just to look at? Maybe nobody else wants one, but.
She have it?
Yeah, go, you have the original.
I know you talked about it really. Is that for that campsite up there or is that for Helms?
Okay, what was the legal description?
Uh, it's section sixteen and nineteen, Township one forty-six, range eighty-eight.
One forty-six nineteen? I don't know, one forty-six, eighty-eight, eighty-eight, okay. One, right?
Don. Thank you, thank you.
One forty-four, one forty-five.
All confused.
Forty-five, one forty-six. Eighty-eight. Way up here?
Yeah.
He said section sixteen?
Yeah, sixteen and nine.
That's a campsite up there.
Now, do you?
There's a house and there was something along, I saw it on along the lake here when I was up fishing this weekend. There's something over there, very long there. You're looking for water up there?
Where's he, this is for the water line?
Water line, yeah.
From, where does it originate? Okay. Let me ask.
There's a camp or housing just.
Is this out there in front of P and Z?
Not the utility crossing permits.
Okay.
Goes underneath the road, right?
Yeah, they're just asking for a permit to cross County Road.
Just to come, to cross Fourth Street Northwest? Is that what it is?
Since they're trenching, they'll be disturbing the whole road now to the border.
Well, it's, it's trenching in the ditch. It's in the right away. Right.
So they're asking to.
Just going to the trench in the ditch and not disturb the road, but yeah, it's in the right away.
Oh, this is the.
The cable dips, yes.
Not collating.
Okay, yeah, they're gonna cross Fourth Street, yeah.
Sixteen. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do the regulation then, right? We, we have nothing to do with getting some better relations.
Nope.
I mean, it's, it's right up against. This road will bend to the right.
Okay, so this is.
This is used to keep. This is.
Right.
For the, you had that, there was a road, there was a farm.
Yeah, we have required a trench site.
We would dis.
Okay.
So I mean, we're on.
Says it's crossing, we will cross about a thousand feet east of the steel gate where the wire gate is for the, I can't read the line.
Yeah, I can't read.
Carmen, do you have the original?
This is the original. Okay. But generally these go to the road department. They prepare them and then we approve them. So it's already been through the road department to get to this far, so.
I'm just questioning what is, what is approved. If there is a crossing, is it for permission to cross it or is it?
It's, it's, it's for permission to trench the water line in the ditches and then there is a crossing of the road. And it says it's a thousand feet east of a steel gate.
And so the permit would be for both?
For both, yeah.
And then you go around the water line in the ditch and then cross the road.
And cross the road, yeah. Okay, motion by Rick to approve the utility permit seventeen fifty. Is there a second? Second by Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none. Rick? Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes.
Looks like Jean says aye.
Jean says aye? Can you, gotta sit down.
I was just curious.
I don't even know where I was on that one.
Yeah, you were ready. Okay, uh, there, there's a front differential for the tractor unit one oh nine?
Again, I don't have much information on it. We had one of our tractors where he and I have a person. We're assuming that it's one that we own. They need to repair the front axle, bearings, seals, et cetera. Control switch estimated from Jerry Fineman that, uh, he's a motors to, this was at their bid on it was, and I, from my experience, Jerry's been pretty fair, so I'd recommend that we approve it, so.
And it's not something our account can fix, I mean, if they have to buy his motors?
I don't know.
Well, it could be the cost of it too.
They needed tools and everything else too.
There's no amount on it, but.
An estimate.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred? Then it's over our threshold. That's why this has to come in. Seventy-five hundred, okay. Is there a motion to approve, um, fixing unit one oh nine? Motion by Jamie. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye. That motion passes. Any other road department stuff?
Other than he was, I got an email. He said they're hauling gravel on County Road twenty, but I don't know if they've done any repair work or anything. They hasn't said anything on that either.
Okay. All right.
Have they said anything about state permitting or County twenty for that bridge? It sounded like there was.
Not yet.
Plans or right of ways were signed or whatever?
No, but we got an easement from the south landlord now. He signed one. And of course, I guess it would have been in, probably in the portfolio update, but there was, since it's got to do with the road here, there was, uh, she had concerns about the beavers. And, um, I told her as a political subdivision, we can't enter into anything there. And I got her in contact with the federal, I don't know his official title, federal predator control person. And he's going to take care of her requests unto the best of my understanding.
Okay.
I don't think Beaver Dam is under the bridge. It's a downstream, upstream, something to that effect.
Upstream Beaver Dam was her concern. But we do have, to the best of my knowledge, as explained to me, we have now easement to proceed.
Um, I talked to Charlie this morning. John Shields Bridge is still under construction, but they got everything in, they're backfilling, kind of finishing up stuff. But they, uh, I don't know exactly how the contract's written, but, um, they were supposed to have it finished by July one, so liquidated damages have started on that project.
Yeah, I've heard there's been some hiccups, but.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna even begin because I may say some wrong things, so.
Yeah, and I can't even speculate when it's gonna be finished, but they are aware that they're past their contractual date, but.
But it does sound like it will be completed here pretty soon.
Yeah. Okay. Any other road department? Trying to think if we can move any of this forward. Aaron's here, Marv's here. We could talk about, uh, Western Plains Health. If you're ready? Thank you.
More paper. Well, I've got this. And this, and this also.
Oh, right, yep.
All right, good morning. I am Erin O'Rourke. I'm the administrator at Western Plains Public Health. Uh, our name change was official on May first, so thank you for your help with that last year. Took a while for the IRS to give us their stamp of approval, so, but now it's all taken care of. And I brought our annual program report for you guys to review and then our annual financial report as well as our budget. This year, uh, we are looking at a three point four nine mill levy request from all five counties that are in our region, which is a little bit of an increase from the three point three four request last year. For Mercer County, that ends up being about a ten thousand dollar increase, uh, looking at one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars from your county. If that looks good to you. Uh, we have a significant decrease in federal funding for the year twenty twenty-four, about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that is due to the COVID nineteen funding, all pretty much expiring in the middle of next year. Uh, so that will have a pretty big impact on our overall budget. However, we did have a slight increase in our state aid funding. They increased, the state legislature increased the five million dollar funding limit to eight million dollars for all of the local public health units. And then we do plan in increasing some of our fees so that we can cover some of the loss in federal funding. And then obviously a, a small increase in the levy request. Uh, expenses are pretty much staying the same, except for obviously fringe benefits are increasing, which I know you guys are aware of that too, insurance and N D P R's retirement. Um, so that'll be about a seventy-five thousand dollar increase. And then we're hoping to do a small raise if possible. Uh, still have challenges retaining nurses. They can get paid a lot more at private industry than they can for our government wages, but, so that is always one of the concerns that we have. And then I will also point out that we have added a new line item at the bottom of our budget for a building fund. Rent costs at our main office in Mandan continue to increase significantly. And we want to have a plan for the future so that we don't have to ask a large increase from the counties at any time. So we're reserving about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually moving forward to put into a fund to either build in the future or find a different location. And so I wanted to point that out for your awareness. And are there any other questions or anything that I can clear up?
I don't know if it's too much questions, but just kind of some statements, um, just so everybody's aware, like she mentioned, there's multiple counties. It looks like there's five counties. Um, when we have these joint ventures, we all match the same mill levy. So if we do the three point four nine, everybody else does three point four nine. And then whatever our evaluations come out, that's the funding you receive from the counties.
Yes.
So, um.
That is just an estimate, that dollar amount, but it gets close to where you end up being, yeah. It's, uh, to be, the, it's equalized amongst the five counties based on the county valuation, and that's how I get that formula figured out. So that it's even based on how much your county is worth.
Any timeframe or plan on, on building or is it just kind of saving a little bit for, for a certain time? Go ahead.
Our lease is due March of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And that was a ten-year lease that we signed into when we moved into that building. Um, I am hoping to negotiate the lease here in the future and we'll kind of see where that gets us. But that's the timeframe we're looking at right now. So whether we extend the lease for a few more years after that until we have a plan together, I'm not sure ultimately what the board wants to do. Um, it would be nice to own our own building. It would make a lot more sense for what we're putting into rent every month. But we do, that's our main office. We do have three other offices, one in Bismarck for the WIC program that is funded by the state, one in Beulah, and then one in Carson. Those rental fees are pretty minimal compared to our main office.
While we digest the budget, could you give us, um, kind of a brief overview of your, uh, annual report?
Yes. You can see that I have a graph that describes the, how we are funded. We receive state funds in the form of grants and then the state aid. Obviously, that funds our general nursing programs, a lot of our administrative costs. And then, um, we also have environmental health funded out of the state funding. And that is about, excuse me, eleven percent of our overall budget in twenty twenty-two. And county funding was at twenty-six percent of overall budget. State, or sorry, federal funding was over half at fifty-four percent. And then local non-levy funds, those are our fees for our programs, mostly our environmental programs. Some funding from the city of Mandan and Mercer County for an additional nurse for your area. And then also any foundation funding that we have. And that was at about ten percent of our overall budget. Our programs were kind of picking up speed again in twenty twenty. Um, after the pandemic, we were able to get back to normal programming. We have a number of programs that serve moms and babies, and so you can see that we made quite a few home visits in those programs where a nurse would go out and visit with the mom after she has a baby, help her learn the ropes, especially for those first time mothers. Um, we distributed twenty-seven car seats. We have about four trained car seat technicians in our office. The WIC program served a number of clients. That, um, number of clients for that program is slightly increasing now, which is nice to see again. And the USDA keeps extending the amount of money that WIC clients can spend on fruits and vegetables every month, which is very nice for them to have that. We did discontinue a program called Health Trax. This is where any children from zero to eighteen years of age could come in and receive a full mental, behavioral, physical health screening from our nurses. There are a number of different options in the areas for clients to receive that benefit, and we were not receiving extra funding for that program, so we decided to discontinue it. We have a number of different home visitation clients that we still see in all over five counties. Environmental health continues to be, uh, very in-demand program. Uh, there are about three hundred and seventy-nine food and beverage establishments that are licensed. We conduct about one hundred, um, septic inspections every year. And then we also have eleven pools in the area and nine body art facilities. Interestingly enough, already in twenty twenty-three, I think we've opened at least three or four more body art facilities in our five counties, so that's something interesting to note. And then we have our infectious, infectious disease testing. So that's testing for HIV, hepatitis C, gonorrhea, chlamydia, and syphilis. We continue to see a rise in all of those in our counties, which is obviously a concern. And we do our best to counsel any patients that we see on ways to protect themselves from those diseases. And then we have the harm reduction program that tests clients for hepatitis C, HIV, and then provides them with harm reduction materials. These are, this is the program for the IV drug users. Um, they also receive peer-to-peer counseling when they come to our office. And then, of course, our main program of immunizations. And we do have two syringe kiosks where people can dispose of their used syringes. Anybody in the community that has used syringes that wants to dispose of them safely. And then we just have a number of goals as far as community engagement goes. Uh, strengthening relationships and sharing resources with our partners and creating community coalitions. Um, conducting community assessments with all of our health partners and then improving health literacy in our counties. Any other questions on that topic?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. And then I did want to mention that we will have the Joint Board of County Commissioners meeting. So that's the meeting where I need a quorum of county commissioners from each county present in order to approve the final no levy request. So whatever the counties decide. And that will be on August fifteenth at ten a.m. I will send Carmen meeting details for that after I go through all the county budget meetings. You can come either in person, or there will be connection info included for online or through telephone. It only takes about five minutes, as long as I can get everybody to join right away.
Per conversation in Beulah the other day, our rent's pretty cheap.
And you said a quorum of the counties, so you need at least three counties and at least the quorum of the commission for those counties?
Yes. It gets, it's a very challenging meeting to hold every year because I have to try to scramble to get people at the last minute. So if I can have at least three of you committed to join that call, it will only take five minutes, as long as everybody agrees. Which the determination for the meeting is done during your guys' county meeting, so you guys already know how you're going to be responding during that meeting. So theoretically, it shouldn't take long, but it is challenging to get you guys all wrangled into one spot.
August fifteenth at ten?
Yes.
It's Tuesday.
We always set that date at the joint board meeting every year in the hopes that it works, but it's a year in advance, so really it's difficult, but...
Right.
And as long as you're okay with that, we can do that, but I hate bothering people.
Jean, we got no problem calling you?
No. Call me whatever you want. I've got big shoulders.
You mentioned you were increasing some fees. Is that like septic fees and things like that, were you?
Yeah, I don't think we specifically have talked about septic fees, but food and beverage fees for sure we were going to increase. We're also hoping, and I haven't brought it to my board yet, but that'll be at our next meeting, to start doing a plan review fee. We have a lot of establishments that send in an application, say they're going to open, call us quite a few times to talk through all these details. We put a lot of time into them, and then they don't end up doing anything. And it would be nice to be able to reimburse ourselves for some of that upfront work that ends up not going anywhere. A lot of the other health units in the state also have a fee like that. It's just a plan review fee. So that's one of our thoughts right now. And then just increasing, we try to do that every three to five years, just to kind of keep up. Again, we get state funding for that program, so we don't need to charge an arm and a leg for it. It is a service. But it is so nice to kind of even out some of the costs. And then I think we always match our immunization fees with what we can get reimbursed from insurance companies. So when insurance companies increase their reimbursement, we usually try to increase our private pay fee as well, just to kind of keep all of that even too. So that would be the other area that we would increase. Most of our other services are no cost.
You mentioned state aid. What, what state aid do you receive? Like, is it?
It's specific, it's a specific line item in the Department of Health and Human Services budget for local public health units. We have requested five million from the state since, I think it probably hasn't been raised since two thousand and fifteen. And so this year, we asked for a three million dollar increase, and they did move forward with that. So it's eight million dollars. That is divided up amongst the twenty-eight health units. There's a base fee per, a base amount per county. Don't ask me what that is right now because I don't have it in front of me. And then there's also an amount per population. So since we have five counties, we get a decent amount. It obviously doesn't cover a lot. As you can see, the state portion of our budget is the smallest portion, which is unfortunate, but...
Well, lucky we got Morton County. They got pretty decent population, probably more than the other four combined.
Yeah.
And growing, yeah. Any other questions for Erin? I don't think we approve anything, Carmen. We just accept it, and it's going to go in the budget, and we'll...
But at least you understand our budget, and you got her to answer questions.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, reach out at any point if you want. Carmen has my information. Thank you, guys.
Sounds good. Thanks, Erin. Well, Carmen, did we want to talk about budget stuff?
Well, Dawn and I want to talk about employee health insurance payment requests. Because what we found, when we used to be self-funded, there was one point five million dollars that was put in a health account.
Okay.
And the only thing we could find on it was, at one point, they did use so much of it. I don't know, they put it in the general fund. But seven hundred and five thousand dollars was budgeted in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe. And it was paid into the general fund about fifty-four, fifty-five thousand dollars a month for that year. I don't know why. But the problem is... But this one point five million was set there for that self-funding health insurance, and ten percent of that one point five is actually the ten percent that the employees paid into it. So it's nothing to do with tax dollars, and that comes to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is actually employee money that was put in there. And what we're asking is, so that we can give it back to the employees, is that for one year, we use that money. And it's right there at a hundred and fifty thousand that would cover our employees' ten percent of their health insurance.
So that would be in twenty-four?
Yes. That would be in twenty-four in our budget, but, you know, yeah.
Okay. And how long ago was that fund created? Do we know?
That fund was self-funded, and then many...
I think we were self-funded up until we switched to Sanford Health, which was...
I would say, yeah.
Okay, so, not, not in recent memory by anybody?
I'd say, we're, we're...
I would say, yeah.
Thirty years.
Okay.
And then when we switched over, they just left there until twenty-one. They used it, but we couldn't find any notes of why they pulled it out or anything. But ten percent of that is employees paid into it. So that's why Dawn and I wanted to... At least it would give the guy, you know, the employees a break for one year, plus the county can give that money back.
Would that, would that use all of it, or would there be any?
That would use up the portion that is the employees' money.
Okay.
That's what that would do for one year.
And the remaining portion, is there any need for that?
Right now, from what we can tell, and this is just what we found, we, there is eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars sitting in that employee health account. Last year, we actually gave in that account. We started with eight hundred and six, we had eight hundred and seven, which says my train of thought. I don't know, maybe I'm missing something that the, that we put in where we paid out last year. So if that eight hundred thousand were continually stood there, I don't, you know, again, probably ten percent of that is employee money, so...
We want to see, both Dawn and I got to get a feel for this budget first year.
Yeah.
Ain't going to do anything crazy, but we can prove that that ten percent of that one point five, it is employees' money. And, and, and that's why we're asking this, because we felt really confident, safe that that... And it'd be a way to give it back to the employees, plus give them a break. You know, it would just be...
Marv, did you have a question or comment?
No, I was here when that occurred, seven hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, thank you. I think maybe you might be. Can you clear up why we were doing that?
Yeah, why don't you come up? Thanks, Marv.
The seven hundred and five thousand that was transferred into the general fund from the health fund was a budgetary transfer. And if you look at the minutes, I probably might have some of this information at home, and if I do, I'll send it to Carmen. It was helped to support the general fund, because the general fund was short of money, so they used seven hundred and five thousand. They transferred out of there into the general fund. That question was raised at that time, but the transfer occurred due to the majority vote. That's my recollection of it. And I'll get you if I have any information.
It was in twenty twenty-one.
I believe so.
So that would be the minutes I can look back.
I'm reaching into my memory bank. The seven hundred and five thousand transferred into the general fund from the health fund. That number just rings a bell, just that is, is exact, but the details, I don't have memory of. But it was to support the general fund, and there was discussion that it possibly shouldn't occur, but it was decided. So, and at that time, in fairness, we didn't know that this was employee monies. So it certainly never...
Well, and, and as they're stating, it's ten percent, the ten percent of that. But if we, if we didn't technically transfer the ten percent, we transferred part of the ninety percent, we really haven't. But, you know what I'm saying?
We're going to be using this, the whole ten percent over the one point five before they leave it out.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Marv.
So this is something that we'll discuss during our budget stuff.
Well, yeah, we want to give you a, you know...
A heads-up, kind of to think about it.
Then we'll make our final decisions on, you know, if we want to move forward on that. But really, that's a wash, so that's not really going to affect our budget.
Not going to affect our budget really, but it's really going to help the employees. I mean, I mean, that's a, I don't know how else you, you do it. I mean...
Just for, and it's their money. We don't want to sit with it.
Okay. So at this point, just for information, and then we'll look at it at the final budget, so...
And otherwise, as, as budget numbers, you know, I'm not giving any numbers this time because I want to wait. We got a conference next week. I want to make sure the numbers are accurate. I want to make sure I can explain everything. And next meeting, that's when I'm going to have all of the, because we have our budget review on the twenty-fifth. So our nineteenth meeting, I want to have you guys, I want to give you copies of the budgets you're going to go through. So then you will have a few days to look through all the budgets, and then, and I'll have the list of everybody lined up for the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Starting at nine o'clock, completely, yeah, fairly early. But then that way, you guys will have it. Explanation of what was different on their budgets. I want that on there, and then we go through each budget. You know, a few of them don't, you know, the smaller budgets, not a big deal, but the other budgets, yeah. And I've asked everybody if they absolutely couldn't make it on the twenty-fifth, let me know. I'll get you on a commission me, but nobody said that, so everybody has been on the...
And then the approval of the, I was going to say...
Preliminary budget, August fourth is what we've got scheduled.
Okay.
August, no, August second.
Okay. That, that, that'd be the hearing for the preliminary budget? Yeah, I remember the twenty-fifth.
Then August two would be the first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, because we...
August second, yes. Oh, October fourth is the one where we are the final budget.
Yeah.
Final, sorry, jumping again.
Yeah.
August second, then we can go through and see how you guys feel and accept the preliminary. I just think a lot of your questions, everything should be answered when you have all the department heads there going through their budgets.
You know, I'll, I'll copy out what the date is, the state requires preliminary budgets to be submitted.
It can't be before September second or after. It has to be before October eighth.
Isn't there a date when the prelims, like prior, prior to tax statements getting mailed out?
Okay, yeah.
Is that August tenth? Does that sound right? He's asking when the preliminary budget has to be finalized so that it can be sent out in tax statements.
Yeah, I think it's like October tenth, right?
No, that's the final, August.
August, sorry. I don't know, but I know that I wanted us getting it done on the first...
I can look it up, too, if you have it offhand.
Because then that way, we're safe, we got it, and then she can get her statements ready. I'm thinking you have to mail them out.
We have to have them out on the thirty-first. I do know that I can spark it. There are a deadline date for the actual approval, the preliminary.
Maybe that's what, maybe that's what the other side is just...
Yep. The August first is a hard one, and we have to have them all by then.
Concerned, Jean, are you good?
There's a lot of months.
September second, August twenty-first, August twelfth, no, October fifteenth. Boy, I'll tell you what. You guys got me dizzy.
The preliminary budget, budget statement that Dawn has to have filed has to be done by August thirty-first. The final is October, after October fourth, but...
I want to say October tenth on that one.
Yeah, yeah. So if we have the preliminary budget meeting on August second, that will allow almost the whole month to adjust anything on the preliminary, so Dawn can get it out by that hard deadline of August thirty-first to the proper state officials. And then our final budget, I think you're right on October tenth. I don't know why that's sticking in my head. But if we have the final budget on the fourth, that still gives us four or five days to make any adjustments if we see something or commission changes its mind on something, or any unforeseen circumstances, so that way Dawn can meet that deadline as well. So the dates that the ladies have proposed will give us what we need.
Okay. Everybody's favorite time?
Hey, it's a learning experience. It's interesting, really.
Yeah.
It's been good. I'm excited about that conference next week. Oh, it's so good. Just check, make sure the numbers are right. We're not missing anything.
And when, and when's that conference?
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Yeah, right on time.
They, they plan these things.
What's that?
They plan these things.
Yeah, I know. They're good. Stage is very good.
So you've requested our departments to have their...
They're already in. Yeah, by the end of June, they were all in.
Okay.
That was what I requested.
Okay. Anything else on budget discussion? Thanks, Dawn. The only thing we have left is the executive session. Do we have to wait till eleven, Todd, or is that something we can?
Just to be on schedule, let's take fifteen to do it right on time.
Okay.
So then just keep in mind that it's the, I, I, I don't have any specifics of what legal questions the commission has. If it does have something that should be public, I'll inform you, and then we can move that to when it's opened back up.
Okay. Let's take recess till eleven a.m.
Too many papers right here.
You're dysereum.
A lot of random papers.
I guess I did. I, I think she came and gone. Oh, that's, okay. We have been, we were self-funded before ten years ago. Before Shannon became auditor. Before Shannon became auditor, we were always self-funded. And I've been here twenty-eight years, I would say at least thirty, forty years. In our medical, absolutely, we had.
Insurance?
We had insurance, we were Shield, we were self-funded, we had top of the line insurance. That's where, um. We all put money in.
Yes, thank you.
And we had insurance and everything got paid out of that fund. That one point five, that's why you had to have so much in it too, because it paid all our medical bills. On EBS, well, like we're in PERS and it's statewide self-funded, we all put into the pot, the more people you have in the pot. It was part of a Blue Cross. And PERS is the same way, it's just a statewide pot, the more you have people in it, the cheaper it is for everybody else. That's why we can get PERS out of the system.
Right, but the employees put a portion into PERS.
Oh, oh, yes, we do.
County does also.
Okay. So what we were doing before that was putting it all into.
The premium. So the employees, two hundred dollars a lot.
All right, so.